Seven o'clock, we'll go ahead and get started. Good evening, I'm Grace Lesbrunt, Cascade Supervisor. Clerk Slater, please call the role.
Trustee Rizzi.
Here.
Trustee Nordhook.
Here.
Supervisor Lesbrunt.
Here.
Treasurer Corstange.
Yeah.
Trustee Nor Dyke.
Here.
Trustee Shipley.
Present.
Clerk Slater, present.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Their motion or discussion for approval of tonight's agenda?
Shipley makes a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion by trustee Shipley, supported by treasurer Corstange, to approve the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Having no presentations this evening, now's the time for public comments that's on anything on tonight's agenda, which includes a new fire, fire medic vehicle, 2025 road improvements here in the township, interior refresh on this library happening later this winter, an update, updates to our park ordinance, some appointments to various boards and commissions, and also a subcommittee to assist in the zoning ordinance update. Please state your name and your address for record keeping, and we'll have virtual attendance after we hear from anyone here. Approval of tonight's consent agenda, is there discussion or motion?
Shipley makes motion to approve the consent agenda for this evening.
Support.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee Rizzi, to approve the consent agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Financial actions, specifically invoices scheduled to be paid on January 23rd, is there a discussion or motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Support.
It's a motion by treasurer Corstange, supported by trustee Nordhook, to approve tonight's financial actions, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Having no unfinished business, first item of new business, item 004 2025, purchase of replacement fire department vehicle. We've got fire marshal Pell here tonight, and also fire chief majors, so we'll turn it over to you gentlemen.
Alright, thanks supervisor. So the fire department is requesting a purchase for a staff vehicle for the fire marshal. We maintain a fleet of four staff vehicles that were used for emergency purposes. This vehicle is going to replace the current fire marshal vehicle, which has 100,000 miles and is 10 years old, which is typically what we try and get out of a vehicle is 10 years and 100,000 miles, and then it goes to utility status for a few years, and then it gets auctioned off. The current fire marshal vehicle is a 2016 tow, we're going to utility status for a few years, it will replace the oldest utility vehicle we have, which is a 2012 Suburban, starting to rust out, that'll go to auction. Total price in the CIP budget was approved at 70,000, this total project, including purchase of vehicle under the state my deal purchasing program, as well as the three quotes for upfitting the vehicle with radios and computers, light sirens would all meet within the budget as approved. So that, we are requesting that vehicle, and I do have my fire marshal here if you have any questions as far as use or anything like that.
Questions, discussion?
I've got some comments, of course. Fire department is one of the departments that the township should be proud of, because they forecast out usage of the vehicles, they make sure that they last that long, and they make sure that they have capital funding for the replacement. And I see no problems with this, this keeps right within the township budget and keeps the fire department functional, including probably one of the most important parts, no disrespect to the firefighters, but the fire marshal and fire investigation. So with that, I make a motion to approve their purchase of the replacement vehicle.
Support.
It's a motion, or is there further discussion? It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee Nor Dyke, to approve the replacement vehicle as stated, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you gentlemen. Next item 005 2025, approval of 2025 local road improvements. We've got managing director Jerry Burns with us tonight, thank you for coming personally, in person, and also township engineer Eric Thor, so Eric, I'll turn it over to you, and then we can take advantage of director Burns being here.
So what I have in front of you this evening is the 2025 local roads program that we, in partnership with Kent County Road Commission, put together on an annual basis and put in front of you for approval. The basically signing the work orders for Kent County Road Commission to go ahead and include in their bid package for this year, the, the work that is in this request for board action, that work being this year, just over eight miles worth of road and surface improvements. It's a little higher than it has been in previous years, in part because there are over two miles included of the Berger Goodwood neighborhood. Those are grant funded dollars from Kent County that we are using to restore roads following water main extension work, as part of the PFOS remediation project in that neighborhood. So, as in previous years, Kent County Road Commission continues to offer a 50/50 cost share. So Kent County Road Commission pays half the cost, we pay half the cost as the township. This year, in addition to the $500,000 that was approved in budget for road improvement under the local agency local roads program, is an additional $180,000 that would need to be approved. This is the result of what work that was supposed to be completed last year, that was pushed into this year. So last year, 623,000 and change had been approved to be completed, roughly, and Lorna can correct me if I'm wrong, $477,000 worth of work was completed, and we had planned with Kent County Road Commission, an additional 145,000 to expend that budget, it was to be used for a three quarter to a one inch asphalt cap on a number of roads that are listed in the packet. The contractor did not complete that work last year, so Kent County came back this year and proposed it as part of the work that would be completed this year. So 145,000 plus or minus is of that 180,000 overage. Scope of the work is 28th Street, Butrick to Snow, Cherry Lane, 36th to 45th, and 45th, Whitneyville to Cherry Lane, are what's going to be a quarter, three quarter to a one inch asphalt overlay followed by chip ceiling, and then Butrick Avenue, 28th to Whitneyville, it's about two miles, it'll be a crush in shape, basically a reconstruction of the road. And that is what would normally be in our 2025 local roads program, but like I said, this year we have the additional two point something, 2.22 miles that is in the Berger Goodwood neighborhood. And so that is about a third of the total mileage in that neighborhood that we plan on doing altogether. There's an additional five miles plus or minus that would get done next year. The reason we have split it up the way that it is, is because we are trying to avoid resurfacing roads this year, that construction traffic would otherwise be on this summer when they complete the water main extension project. So the goal is to get in this year, get about a third of that work done, come back next year, finish once all the water main work has already been completed. That way we are providing as best, best product as possible for those residents. With that said, I know Jerry has a few slides he'd like to go over with you, so I'll give him the opportunity to do that, of course, happy to answer questions myself, or Jerry can as well.
Thank you for the invite, Cascade is one of our good partners in local roads, we're proud of the fact we're one of the only counties that offer 50/50 split. Local roads are not a moneymaker for the county. We, we get really two pots of money, local primary, we transfer about $10 million of primary money into the local system, so we can continue to fund local roads with our township partners. As Eric just went through, that was, that's the proposal. Skip the next slide if you like. We talk about how we come through with this, we really base our roads on a Pacer rating, one to 10 scale. We are, again, one of the only counties that rates every single asphalt road every single year. And a lot of counties don't rate their locals at all. Our biggest partner, our biggest counterpart is Oakland County, and they rate them every three years, we're proud of the fact we do it every year, so you have good data, we have good data. This is probably what jointly we all need to be proud about, or if you look at 2015, how many red and yellow roads you had in Cascade Township? Nine years later, what it looks like in 2024? If we didn't have the burger plaque that we've been holding off of because of the improvement, it would be just about all green and yellow. Very proud of that fact, it's good work, it's good money for your residents. We talk about improvement strategies. What you saw in that last slide was about $20 million worth of work over the past nine years, okay? It's a lot of money for us to spend collectively from our taxpayers. We have a pavement condition cycle, we like to preserve the roads. It will be very beginning, so we can get the most life out of that expensive fix, and it really pretty simple concept, it's really no different than what you do with your car. If you're gonna, if you're somebody that takes care of your car, and you clean the interior and you wax it, you do it before it starts to rust, you don't wait till it starts to rust before you do maintenance on your vehicle. So the concept is the same. Resurfacing, these are ballpark numbers, we're seeing about a 7% increase this year over last year, which we feel real fortunate, because last year was 15. Resurfacing, where we're typically putting about inch and three quarters, two inches, you're talking almost quarter million dollars a mile, we can do a chip and a fog for about $140,000 a mile. The other problem with continually doing overlays, if you're in neighborhood streets, you can't do that, because pretty soon the blacktop's higher than the driveways. So then you're gonna come in, you're gonna mill it all off, all the way and start over. You get about one overlay in a neighborhood street, even in your 28th Street, where a lot of driveways, you can't keep jacking it up, or it's gonna be higher. The other thing we really talk about with chip seals or something other than a flat, hot black asphalt, is a friction factor. And a good example of a friction factor is today, okay? It's the number one safety factor we can do to a road, is put some friction on it, so your tires adhere better, turn better, stop better. Federal highway recognizes it, we recognize it. We put chip seals on roads that don't need anything, because they're in perfect condition, because people can't stand the road and the curve and the hill, we'll chip them simply to get a friction factor, even though the road doesn't need it, except for safety, so. Again, this is a great example, I think there's one more slide we took of today. Cannonsburg Road was chipped last year in Fox Seal, you can look at the difference between West River and Cannonsburg, that chip doesn't let the, doesn't let the ice and snow adhere as quickly as smooth pavement, same concept. Smoother it is, it's gonna adhere better, it's rough, it's not going to, so. We see this, fire and law enforcement can see it. It's just a better surface to drive on. Is it the most popular? I'm here to tell you no, because I hear it at my house.
We hear it on, yeah.
I hear it at my house, okay, my wife hates it, yep. But I tell you today, I would far rather drive on a road that was chip sealed last year and rolled in than to drive on a hot mixed asphalt, because the coefficient of friction totally different. And it's not only when it's icy, it's when it's wet, and when it's dry. Not that we encourage people to drive faster, we all know we can't control how people, how people drive, but we can give them the best condition possible. So. I think that's the last slide, if I remember, because we've done it four o'clock this afternoon, but I'm open to questions.
First of all, I will commend you, I think that this county is, you know, we have a governor that campaigns on fixing the jam lanes, and I feel like his county didn't require that pledge, where you drive through the rest of the state, and, and, you know, I, I put you on par with counties that don't have this no problem down south, so, well done there.
Thank you.
What, a few questions, what, what determines whether you chip seal versus fog seal?
Well, we fog seal on top of every road we chip seal.
Okay.
Okay. When we chip it, first we do the prep work, like Eric talked a little bit about, depending on the condition of the road, we're gonna put some hot mix down, then we're gonna chip it, then we're gonna let it sit for two or three weeks, so that bond, then we're gonna fog over the top of it. Every chip seal, it's a fog seal. A standalone fog seal is kind of like you do to your driveway.
Yep.
Okay? It, it's not the same as add some friction and a little bit of, we, we put a half a gallon of emulsion every square yard, it soaks into those cracks, and it binds the stone. When you're just putting a straight fog, it, it, it doesn't really add a lot to it, okay? We've tried it. We've tried some new technology where they actually say that emulsion is actually absorbed into the asphalt. The jury's still out on it, I'll be honest with you, I sometimes I call those people that sell us that sneak home salesmen, because they're just selling us something that we really don't have technology to tell us it's gonna last. The chip seal, we know, because we've been doing it for 60 years, it's gonna last. And we changed how we chip seal. We use more expensive glue, emulsion if you will. The best glue possible, we use a smaller, lighter aggregate, so we don't have as much of that coming off. We use the least amount possible, we're rolling with three rollers, we're sweeping it as quickly as we can, and we're fogging it, again, to lock that from the top down.
Got it. So, if I could, I, I get it, I understand the friction, and I understand there's friction that comes with friction, right?
Absolutely.
And, you know, if I think about the residents that I talk to, you know, it's probably in the top four, they hate it. I saw in the Dakotas, they were testing a new rubber composite material, have you played with that at all, is that something that we've considered? It, it doesn't seem to have the same, it, I can't speak to the, the friction, although they make claims that it does, just like your salesman, but it doesn't seem to have the same effect on, you know, guys who are driving nice quartettes around.
The answer is, we are constantly looking at the latest technology, there are some coming out of South America
Yep.
that we're looking at, we're telling them, that's great, it doesn't have the same conditions we have today when it was minus six degrees and
That's why I mentioned the Dakotas.
Yeah, and I understand, but my point is, we look at all new technology, no matter where it comes from.
Okay, wonderful.
We try it, but we don't jump in blindly, like, okay, we're changing our program. But we do, like I said, there's some new technology, we tried it in Virginstownship last year, we're gonna expand it a little bit, but cautiously, because we don't want to fall on our face just because it worked in North Dakota, and, and again, what's their traffic lines compared to yours, I talked to one of your residents, we talked about a very busy intersection that's failing because of the turning movement, and we probably has 12,000 cars a day.
Sure.
So, those are all factors.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay.
Questions? Sorry if my terminology is not right.
You're good.
This is not my realm, first of all, just a clear question. Fog seal, is that when you spray, I call it tar, over the top after you chip seal?
Yeah. After you chip seal.
You're good, it's both, you're both correct, it's black, and it's kind of tar.
Okay.
Yes, we're good.
I just wanted to make sure, and then, um, my main question is about the picture you showed where our roads were all red, and now we're mostly green. So, given this, what we've done in the last nine years or so, can we expect to continue to spend the amount of money we're spending every year, or have we done enough, this is my terminology, of the mill and fill on most of these roads, so then we'll have a point of maintenance of overlay or chip and seal?
You're doing great, you're doing great.
To be able to maintain these for a while, or can we expect just to budget and spend this much money, 600 plus thousand dollars a year on our roads? Just wondering, looking forward.
You should be able to spend less. Okay.
Just, can that kind of tell me that, because we're really red, and now we're green, I would think it would be less, but I know it is a concern, and I think we want to maintain them, but we also don't want to continue to probably spend like as much as we have been.
Well, but three or four years ago, you were spending probably 1.2 to 1.5 million dollars a year, I mean, you were almost breaking our bank, because you were spending more than three or four townships combined, and everyone stood at the point, they had to get caught up, so $600,000 is the right amount? Probably when I look, I think you have 74 miles of local roads, is that?
Yep, you're right.
And that, oh, so. So that's probably not that far off, but you're half of what you were spending four or five years ago, and with inflation, we're kind of like eggs, okay? Used to buy eggs for 99 cents, and now they're four and a quarter? When I say we're happy with a 7 to 8% increase, we're happy with that, that's way above the normal CPI.
Right.
But last year it was 15 plus percent, so. I think you need to plan on spending that $600,000 if you want to maintain that, and then throw a cost of living, you know, that inflation.
Right, 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 okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to.
And, and again, we're struggling with, whoever started out with the governor's speech, and I hear that all the time, okay? Be, because we are all paying less per mile to drive as we buy more fuel efficient cars. And that, that hurts with the cost of living that we're dealing with. So, until somebody other than a county, we do not have a township village for roads, or a county village for roads, again, one of the only ones around that don't. And, and we rely on fuel tax and registration, till something changes, it, it's, it's gonna squeeze tighter and tighter and tighter.
So is the average state, most do, most counties in the state do have that kind of village?
They either have township, individual township villages that they get. A lot, a lot do, I think. I don't think any of the counties, I think every county that touches us has either a countywide village or township villages, or both. I have property in Ottawa County, and I pay both a county village and a township village for roads.
EVs don't help.
EVs currently don't pay the same rate as somebody that's driving probably a 10-year-old car that's getting 20 miles per gallon. It's really what's hurting us most is fuel efficiency more than EVs at the moment, but EVs are starting to, but it's the fuel efficiency, who, who's bought a car lately that hasn't received five miles more per gallon when you bought a new vehicle?
I was driving a cheap Wrangler, so.
Well. Okay, so the supervisors, rarity of the group, when we purchase a new vehicle, it's five more miles per gallon. So. But the, the good news, there appears to be some bipartisan support to at least address it on a statewide basis. I don't truly know what that means.
Just a couple of comments, one, yes, we are an anomaly on the side of the state where we have nice roads. Everything needs to be fixed on the east side where I came from. And seeing a, seeing a Pacer map like this is something that people really strive to get to in communities and counties, and to address the 600,000 and putting in this, as soon as this is green, it starts to not turn green. So, this is from 2024, and after you do the evaluation for 2025, some of your greens then go to yellow, to orange, and then back to red, so. It's, it's really important if we're at a stage like this, from my perspective, I think Eric's perspective and Jerry's, when we bring the budget before you, we'll talk about how to best apply the 600,000, but if we want to maintain those roads that
Yeah, and I don't, I don't want that to be, I, I get that, like, I don't think we get too green, and then it's like, oh, we just sit back, that's why I was asking these terminology questions about milling.
You did great.
Putting stuff on top afterwards, but.
I had a couple of questions, I guess. Curious, how many townships participate in the program?
Actually, last year, 21 of 21 participated in some type of cost share, okay? But understand, some of our rural townships in northern Kent County still have 50 miles of gravel roads, so their cost share may be addressing gravel roads, but we currently have contributions from all 21.
That's fantastic.
It is, we feel really blessed that we have that.
You're doing something right.
Well, it's about building relationships, and that's what we're doing here.
Right.
That's what we do with 21, so.
All right, and then I was wondering with, I guess this is an observation I've had over the years, is when they do mill and fill a lot, it seems a lot of times you'll have an older road, it's got puddles in certain spots in the curves and whatnot, they mill it out, they lay down the new layer, we get a rainstorm and the puddle's in the same spot, is there a maybe another, say, level or tier that, to, to do improvements to the base, is that, I mean, rather than just go over top the same base, what's, what's your take on that?
My take is, you're right, some of the areas are so flat, you don't have a lot of grade to work with. So what you really need to do is take the asphalt up and start playing with the grades, so you can build some cross slope and build some grades, you can get it to the catch bases. Two problems with that is, one is money, and two is, we're there a lot longer than what the residents like. Residents love us when we go and do a mill and fill, mill it one day, base it the next, raise the castings, three days later, we put the top on, and we're long gone, we're heroes. If we're there doing that extra work, I'm not saying we shouldn't, we're not that, we're, we're not as well liked, okay? Because it takes us time to do that, and some of the areas are just too flat, I mean, there's a couple roads that, I've been here over 45 years, that we've done it a couple of times, and I'm flustering, but it's so flat unless we come in and start building humps, if you will, grade, it, it puddles. And then the issue is, you have a bunch of driveways, you end up cutting back on the driveway because you raised the grade two inches, so now we're back in somebody's driveway and driving the cost up. It's a balance.
Okay. If we had, if, if our township were to identify areas like maybe where there's a a drain, but it's uphill from where the puddle is, kind of, you know, we needed to fix some areas like that, is that something you could do on a, you know, as opposed to regrading the whole road, you could fix certain spots? Obviously, I know it comes with a cost, but is that something that maybe you're open to, or?
Absolutely, and we try to address as many of those as possible. A lot of times, we make puddles because before we were there, the pavement was cracked. That is like a sponge, lets the water go through, and it's like, wait a minute, we nailed a puddle before, you're right, you didn't, because it soaked into the base.
Right.
Now we, we've actually made some puddles because of that. Could we, yes, and do we some, yes, do we do them all? No, because that really means tear it up and, and really go at it almost from the bottom up.
I, I hear what you're saying, and that, yeah, sometimes that creates more friction too, so.
And we're not afraid of friction, but we also have to make that balance, if we're gonna spend twice as much money, do we do half as many roads, so what's that?
In my planning commission days, years ago, we used to get a, a five-year plan would come across our desk, I think every March or so, and it would kind of highlight not the residential streets necessarily, but it would kind of give you a teaser, if you would, overview of what was coming down the down the road for 28th Street, or Patterson, or Cascade Road. I don't think we've seen that much lately, is that something that, that is, is that something you guys still produce, or?
We, we should be giving, at least on the local system, depending on what you want to spend, a five-year or a three-year, depending on, we really like to go back to about a three, because it's more realistic. You put some false expectations, people see that map, and five years later, you're going, hey, we're on that map, where are we? So, three years is kind of what we look at, if we're not, we need to work on it. On the primary system, we really have pulled our wings back in because we're not doing a lot of reconstructs, because it's the same concept we're talking on the locals, we need to touch more miles of road, so our true plan has shrunk because we're not doing those bigger projects, we're doing more of what you're talking about here, mill and fills, more chip seals, so we can touch more miles, so what we do give you is going to be smaller than what we gave you five years ago. Not necessarily doing less work, but it's more of a flexible plan. We just, those bigger projects, for us to spend, you know, two and a half million dollars for a mile, it hurts, because we could touch four or five miles. Okay, so, we can do better if we're not getting
No, I talked with, the last time I had a conversation with Paul Murphy in your office, we had talked about putting together a formal two or three-year projection, so we could make that available to you. That was kind of a project for this year, being that the work for next year, and this year and next year, we're very cut out, it was the Berger Goodwood area, I think is obviously the next one to tackle. But that was on the agenda this year, is that we would sit down with Paul, or Paul would have, he'd connect with us on a number of roads that the county identified as probably what we'd want to be working on in the next year or two.
Yeah, and we encourage taking the supervisor and the engineer with us, and go drive them and look at them, we're not, we're not gonna come in and say, these are the 10 roads you have to do, if you have concerns, we'll look at them, I mean, they're local roads are kind of ours, not ours, not yours, ours collectively.
We like to say they're yours when we get all the questions.
Like, over the last two days, when it's snowing and slippery, they're all ours, right?
Can I ask you, just as, while we have you here in
Sure.
Houston, speed limits? The question we get probably most commonly, why can't we slow down Cascade Road, or we're getting to Cascade Road, so could you just explain to us speed limits, and then also, we get a lot of requests for certain areas that people think are dangerous, so they want a sign, and also maybe a crosswalk.
Okay. So it's kind of three into one, I'm gonna take the first two, and that's signs, and I don't personally care if it's a speed limit sign, or a children playing sign, or a deer crossing sign, or whatever. People that does not change people's driving habits. What we find, it gives a false sense of security for people to think you're gonna change people's driving habits. If you want to change speed limit driving habits, then have your community police officer grab his or her ticket book and start writing them by the, and then watch your phone blow up, but that, that's, that's, the, the only connection is between the wallet and the brain. The sign doesn't make any difference, okay? Our opinion, we've actually done studies where we've stopped people after they Where we've stopped people after they've driven a mile road, tell us what sign you saw. They don't even remember the stop sign. But it it these these are true, they're not, it it. It's true, they don't, okay? Speed limits are set by what's called the eighty fifth percentile with the state police, okay? Typically radar or through cameras or some type of device. A hundred cars, more than that, but you throw out the top fifteen because they drive too fast, you set that eighty fifth percentile speed plus or minus five miles an hour. Because that's what people are going to drive the average speed. What we don't want is a differential between the two speeds. We don't want to set a speed limit at thirty five when everybody's driving forty five. Because then you have some people driving thirty five, most driving forty five or fifty, and you cause passing movements. That's where we have problems. Okay, a consistent speed is the best speed. That doesn't mean driving ninety on a freeway is the best. But it the the consistency is what we're looking in speed limits, okay? The townships through the new law have some input, but ultimately it's the Michigan State Police. That set the speed limits on county roads. And you can see. In cities that can set their own, you drive down certain roads in a city, you're going, how can this be twenty five? It's five lanes with sidewalks. You're looking to see where where's the police officer officer setting? Because you 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 feel like you should be able to drive faster. If we're reasonable and prudent drivers, we drive what we feel is reasonable and prudent. Regardless of the speed, I I challenge anybody on their way home to drive a road. Get to the other end and tell me what the speed limit was. Okay.
What about two? And we're talking about false sense of security. One of the things we hear a lot, well, um, put a median crosswalk or. Not enough on Cascade Road.
Right. We can look at that. I mean, you were one of our first ones. We're we, you know.
No, we've gotten actually backfired. I'm surprised you guys allowed that one by the barber shop because um. Yeah, I'm just still surprised how you guys got how you allowed that as is.
Yeah, well, because you know what? We we see. It's not all about cars, even though the cars are what pays to get the roads fixed, maintained and everything else, but there are other modes of transportation we have to accommodate. So if it makes sense, we're not opposed to looking at those those type of crosswalks. But again, probably what frustrates me the most is if there's truly a signal with head signals. Why wouldn't somebody walk a thousand feet to use that versus crossing mid block? Or how many people? Not even five hundred feet away, cross mid block instead of using the control that's designed. I mean, it's frustrating for us when we see that. You know, we look at, we look at every fatal accident, you get a pedestrian hit, you're concerned, you look at, my gosh, you were crossing Twenty Eighth Street mid block and there was a signal. A thousand feet down the road.
That's what happens.
I I don't, you know.
It's a crossing the liquor store.
Is a crack.
Quick and there's no correlation between.
So we're taking minutes. That wasn't wrong.
No.
We're frustrated with that. I wish it was a good answer.
And it's hard too because. Yeah, there's a misconception that the the assumption is they were crossing a crosswalk, a legal crosswalk, when really.
We we look at those because we have high concern for what they call vulnerable users. And and a lot of them are are not crossing in in a crosswalk and there's usually there's sometimes. They're not far down the road or how many people jaywalk? I mean, just sit at an intersection. And watch either vice or what we call vulnerable users not following the the pet crossing, like.
It's a great segue into what I was going to say too. Uh, a lot of communities, uh, other counties I know do it township does, I think City East Grand Rapids, Middleville. They've got uh the pedestrian crossing signs now or you push the button and then the lights flash on both sides of the road.
Right.
Has Kent County come any closer to considering adopting that technology yet?
We are talking about it. Okay, our traffic manager just. Talked to me about it, that new technology. Uh, so the answer is yes, but we need to prove that they work in the conditions. You know, in East Grand Rapids where everything's twenty five, it's different than Cascade Road that's forty five.
Absolutely.
And and again. What are people do? Are they using them? You know, so the answer to your question is yes, uh, there's new signals. Uh, for for blind hearing impaired where you hit the button and it makes a lot of noise. So we're looking at all that new technology.
Okay.
Uh, but I will say, just like we started off with, you know, the governor says he's going to fix the roads, it's about money. I was talking to a gentleman, we like roundabouts, they're two point four million dollars apiece.
Billion or million?
Million, two point four million, sorry, million, that's enough, a million apiece. We can put a traffic signal up for three hundred thousand. We love putting more roundabouts in, but. Nobody's shaking for two point four million dollars apiece.
And then uh my last question is, uh, I noticed when I look at at bridges and and um. Barriers, I guess, around our county road system and even on the state expressways. And I don't know the right terminology here, but you know, you've got the the railing, if you would, and in the bottom four to six inches, kind of where the curb height. Usually bumps out on on like an angle. Uh. Our, I've had a few people tell me that our our new barrier uh over the Thornapple River on Cascade Road. Doesn't have that that bump on the bottom to prevent your uh vehicle, if you will, from driving right into the thing, kind of. What do you have a a take on that? Is that is that?
All I'll tell you is those standards continually change based on crash data. And when we build something new, we're going to use the latest crash data. Design, so without me looking at it.
Not at the, it's it's straight right to the road.
But it it comes to a kind of a point in a lots of metal at the bottom.
I don't, I don't want to speak with two road experts in the room, but the project's not complete. And then also the design of that, the barrier that's closest to the traffic was meant to take the impact of a car where most are not, and that's. See that slope, am I correct?
The priority was protecting pedestrians, not bumpers.
Yeah.
For car tires.
I guess I. I I think the barriers flush through the section of the bridge. I think transitioning into it, it probably the the curb probably has a hundred foot transition into that barrier. With the with the uh the guardrail behind it. So if I goes curb. Guardrail and then it transitions into the barrier between the road and the pedestrian path. So I think you're you're both right. There's parts where there's a curb and a. Guardrail and then it transitions into a concrete from kind of in a buck and.
Barrier. Yeah, and again, we were trying to do something there different than a standard on a freeway type of thing, but again, those standards continually change from federal highway. And we need to continue to change. What's with them? Yeah, we we, yeah, we look at it, it's like, are we doing something new and different? This is only a couple of years old. It's like, it's the new standard. That's why if you look at guardrail ends, there's probably six different endings on guardrails because it continually changes based on crash data.
Try, I think it's important to know, you know, on on the bridge, there were people, you know, say it's it's narrow and there's a barrier here now. The outside lanes on that bridge, the county stipulates, I believe it's twelve foot in those outside lanes. Those outside lanes are a touch wider. Than the three inside lanes on purpose to allow room.
And I I've been telling people when they finish the project and they restripe it, the lane will be wide enough that you won't feel like you have to be. You know, dragging along the guardrail, but. Jerry, I really appreciate you coming and answering all your questions like this grilling. This has been very good.
Well, again, that's the partnership we like and that's what we want to do because we do, we do like your six hundred thousand or your million, whatever. It gets much more than that. It's a little dicey, but. We do like it because it helps all our residents and and that's what we're here to serve. So we're glad to do it. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Oh, go away.
Oh.
Yes, sir.
You can just ignore him. He always has something.
Okay. Eric, you're our township engineer. And we have a lot of trust and faith in you. Are you happy with the the plan?
Of course, yes, I have firm belief as as one engineer for the township, it's nice to have a team of engineers at the county that we can lean on. Um, I do, of course, trust their judgment. Everything Jerry has said today is something that I would have told you, but it makes me feel good having the county in here. Obviously, he has the authority to tell you this is how it works in Kent County.
And don't forget, don't forget, along some of these roads that you're proposing. Uh, surface improvement, we have some residents that are saying, hey, what about my pathway coming out here into the country like one Twenty Eighth Street? Thirty Sixth Street. So we'll be talking to you again in the future. Um. Lastly is I notice a couple little tiny segments. They're not even the size of a caterpillar. But they're red. And they're on the. Kent County International Airport property. Do we pay for those?
Are are you talking? The road that comes into our South Complex?
No, I'm talking about one that says complex drive.
I thought.
Okay, another one on the backside that says it's off of Air Cargo Drive. I just want to make sure we're not paying for the cotton picking airport.
You are not paying for the cotton picking airport, okay? I will tell you then on South Complex Drive, it is a local road like any other local road.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, we probably would ask for a cost share on there. Because it's a local road. If you told me no, I'd probably say, you know what? Tell me no, and it's kind of our driveway.
All I know is that it's in this big mass of yellow that's in uh. Titled Kent County International Airport, so.
Well, and and maybe it is because that is truly airport property.
Yeah, are you down here, right? And you're in the airport, right?
She made the map too small for me.
Is this the Great Valley Metro Council's council's Pazer system or separate, same system we use?
Same system, but on the local roads, our people are trained to do it. We do it ourselves. Okay, it's reported, but our staff. Completes the Pacer ratings on the locals and on the primaries, but on the locals, hundred percent us.
Right, um. And what are we paying Grand Valley Metro Council for their use of their Pazer system for? I'm not saying we shouldn't, I'm just curious. You guys do it.
I'm not sure, I I'm, I mean, you you pay into Grand Valley, but.
Pay into the 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 organization. I don't think we pay specifically for their Pazer ratings.
I don't think.
I had just heard that when we're asking where the where the value is. That one of the major values was the the Pazer system through the Metro Council, but.
Again, they house the data.
Research that and I can.
Because I know one of the one of the benefits I was told by the previous manager was, well, the the Pazer system, we get access to it. That's how we monitor the roads, but really we're the road commissioners. I'm not saying we leave the Metro Council. But I'm just.
They do, well, because they're part of a metro planning organization that we need when we're trying to acquire federal and state aid, so. Yeah, it it it's what we need to do to to get that federal and state aid money to play nice. To to make it work. It it's a state requirement. I mean, yes, would we like to cut out all the red tape and maybe save some money, but that's not the rules we play by.
That makes sense.
And they're part of a regional authority, if you will. I don't mean to use authority, but they they cross county lines, so when you're looking at federal dollars and interstate projects and things like that. They pull data, so it could be part of a bigger study, but I can get more detail on.
No, that's okay. It's just it's good to know because then um. You know, the Metro Council kind of doing their own thing and then we get the airport access study, which is really getting federal funds to put for new on and off ramps on the expressway in Cascade Township, when really the existing Thirty Sixth Street exit would serve the purpose that. That they allegedly, you know, we just, we want to make sure that it serves our interests. And same with the um, the current Metro Council's transportation study, which when you hear about it, it's really to pursue a a countywide. Public transportation village because the rapid is is tanky. So this is, I guess it's all one bureaucratic.
We know.
Well, we just want a little capital for Cascade Township and I just, the Pazer system.
The Pazer system on a local road system is done by Kent County Road Commission staff. We do not get any money to do it. There there appears to be some money out there if we want to try to get it. We think it's important enough that we have to use our own dollars to get it or if we get some money. Sometimes if you just get a little bit of money, you might not like all the strings attached, you might just use your own.
Right.
Uh, I'm a little bit old school on that. It is, let's let's do it our way and and do it ourself. But we report it to them. Like Jade said, it is a bigger area that they look at. It's not just. I mean, I like to say it's all about Kent County because we're the biggest one that they're touching, but it is about working together amongst all of us.
You have to partner with City Grand Rapids or because that's the city or they their own?
They're their own. We do partner and we do try to work together when we can, so we're not doing roads or. You know, what what person thought it was a good idea to close these two roads to intersect jurisdictional? So we talk to all the cities, but the cities. Kentwood, Wyoming, Granville, Grand Rapids, Walker. East Grand Rapids all have their own public works or streets, but we meet monthly with them to try to coordinate activities, share uh. Contracts, we give it our prices, but they're their own, just like we're our own.
Well, we appreciate your partnership and it's nice kind of a lot of times with the county at the countywide, the more urban um. Policies or initiatives kind of get, we always feel like a lot of times it's a money grab out to the township, so we. We appreciate the partnership.
And we do too, and we're here to protect. It's probably not the best word to use, but we're here to look at both our interests. Because I don't really care if I'm dealing with Spencer Township in the far northeast corner or Cascade, one of our bigger partners. And then urban or Byron, it doesn't matter. We're serving all those twenty one townships because they're all important to us, even if they have fifty five miles of gravel road. And, you know, only twelve miles of blacktop. It doesn't matter. There's still residents that pay taxes and drive cars.
We're pretty fortunate, especially considering like have the tax base we do. I don't know how more rural townships or counties up in the UP handle all those mileage with.
They're struggling, but but they don't also have the trapping volume. I mean, they're not dealing with the with your population with roads that carry twenty five thousand cars a day. They're they're dealing with roads that carry twenty five. But they still have to maintain, so it's a give and take. There's urban formulas. We're really part of an urban council with Oakland, Wayne, Genesee, McComb. And us, so we're we're kind of the little brother over on the west side, but we play with the bigger partners for urban money.
Perfect.
Okay. One last comment. Eric, I'm sure you're going to hear from at least one of our residents about that little tiny section of gravel road called Peace Street. So be prepared because there are some residents that utilize that road and they're tired of it getting washed out on a regular basis. So I have, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, you bet. Thank you. With that, I make a motion to um. Approve the twenty twenty five local roads program with Kent County Road Commission as presented.
Support.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee Rizzi, to approve the twenty twenty five local roads program with the county. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Pose. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. Item zero zero six twenty twenty five, approval of the Thornapple River Special Assessment District, also known as SAD Treatment Contract. Manager Smith?
Well, thank you. Um, in your RBA, I briefly went over a quick summary in regards to what we're requesting tonight. Twenty twenty one, the Thornapple River Special Assessment District was set and approved. And the owners, homeowners were assessed. On the river. Part of that assessment is actually weed control, water testing and invasive species removal. So. For in twenty twenty two, there was a bid that the. The staff did and awarded the bid to PLM Lake and Land Management, who's been servicing the the river for the last three years. That contract is up, um. And I'm recommending that we go to them. Again, we've talked to the ad hoc committee. I've talked to internal staff. We and and obviously the contractor themselves, they've given us a new proposal for another three years. Um, they've been really easy to work with, very responsive. I believe that the owners on the river have been happy. As well, you know, I'd be happy with the weeds because last year was an interesting year, but the service that we're getting from PLM. Um, they know the river, so without going back out to bid again, we're recommending that we approve another contract with them as they are familiar with the river. And I believe that um that will suit as well as opposed to starting over with a new contractor.
Questions, discussions? I know we have um trustee Shipley and trustee Rizzi who are both on that ad hoc committee.
I just have a comment. I do have a a friend who lives down on Sequoia, uh, right off Forty Eighth Street. And she actually had taken me out in her pontoon before any of this treatment was done and showed me how bad it was. And. Sent me, I think it was last year, sent me some pictures of the river when it was completed. And she said, thank you so much. It's so nice. They love it. They're thrilled with improvement in the river, so. I think it's a good thing to do.
Fantastic. I mean, the it, so it's so sensitive too because it all depends on what's happening with the weather and other environmental. Um, pollutants and things like that, but.
There'll be good years and bad years.
Yeah, exactly. So but the Jamie's been really good to work with at PLM and very receptive.
There's no question that since this program was started, we've had a lot more good years. It it has been um. It has has made a a vast improvement to a lot of things, the the use of the water and. Um, with that, I would make a motion to accept this.
Support. It's a motion by trustee Rizzi, supported by treasurer Corstange, to approve the uh. The SAD Treatment Contract with Professional Lake Management. Additional comments?
Just uh one additional comment is that Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, but PLM was also instrumental in helping us uh. Uh, locate and tag and GPS and boy, some of the uh. Uh, obstacles in the river.
Um, I think we used a different contractor for that aspect. Yeah, although you could argue that by getting rid of the weeds, they made it easier to locate those objects.
Are you talking about Viking?
Yeah.
Yeah, that that is yet to become, well, it was approved.
Right.
That work is going to be done in the spring.
And just to, just to clarify, the the tax funding that we're or the contract funding comes from. Uh, property owners that live have frontage on that. Uh, property owners that live have frontage on that portion of the river, not uh, other residents or properties throughout the township. With that, uh, all in favor? Post. Motion carried. Item zero zero seven twenty twenty-five. Consider the approval of awarding the construction services uh, for the interior refresh project at this library building. And also to amend the fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget in accordance with that project. Manager Smith? Turn it over to you and then engineer for Lauren.
Yeah, um, I'll start it off. We actually have a few people here tonight to assist with this. This is a project that has been inherited by, I think, everybody in this room. It started back in twenty nineteen. Um, and has gone through a couple of different um. Contractors in regards to and consultants in regards to the interior refresh of the library. Uh, we have Eric who's here today. We also have Amy from Carbon Six, and then Lulu and Ashley from the library here to answer questions as well. But I kind of went through a summary um, on the RBA. Don't want to read the whole thing. But what we're doing, uh, you've already awarded the contract to the construction manager Carbon Six back in twenty twenty-four. They have gone out to bid after some reiterations of the the concepts, making sure that we can fall within our budget. Of the one point five million dollars, which was originally budgeted for it in twenty twenty-four. When you approved the twenty twenty-five budget, we asked for an additional two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Just to be cognizant of inflation and not sure where the bids are gonna come back in that. One of the other things that, so so those bids came back in, they had very good response from subcontractors. Uh, we were pleasantly surprised. Um, and those bids came in at like one point four three. One point four five three million dollars, so we came in under the one and a half million dollars. What that does not include is the furniture that needs to be replaced throughout the entire building. Nor does it include any upgrades in the room we're sitting in now or the rooms behind us, so the Wisner Center. So um, what we are requesting tonight is the award for the subcontractors for the library refresh. Uh, the bids that went out, plus an additional five hundred thousand dollars to allow us to go out to bid for the furniture. And then also work with the subcontractors on picking up some work in this this particular um, end of the building. The furniture will come back before you perform a little approval, but we're not gonna go out to bid for furniture if we don't have the budgeted dollars. That's I hope that makes sense. So with that tonight, I worked with Lorna um, from finance, forgot to mention she was here too. She's worked um. Some math, looked at the budget, looked at the fund balance. Um, thank goodness that the property owners approved the tax or the uh, library mileage. That's here as well. Otherwise, we would be having probably a different conversation about the library refresh. So thank you to everybody that voted for that. Um. I I I hope that all made sense because there's kind of a lot packed into this one, but we're looking for approval of the bids that were uh, received. And then the additional dollars to for further improvements in furniture purchases. And if there's any other questions, we're all here, and I don't know if anybody else has anything more to add.
No, it covers it from my perspective.
Dan uh, is at a conference this week. He will be overtaking this um, project and working with the construction manager on a daily basis, but he's at a conference uh. Today, or yesterday, today and tomorrow.
Manager Smith?
Um, yes.
And you know what I'm gonna ask? Um. Is five hundred gonna be enough to do this room, the furniture as well? I I just. Generally irritated with the previous board for not including this, not, you know.
Um, I, so we've had a lot of discussion on that. I think we're comfortable with the half a million for the furniture. Um, I, we worked with the library. The one thing we did too, to be really cognizant of cost was we actually cut out the middleman. So um, the architect, C two A E um, had. Uh, offered and was willing to work on putting that bid spec together and sending that out, but of course, they're gonna take a cut. They're gonna take their fee off of that. So working with library staff and then our own internal staff, we put together, they put together a list of the needs for the library, and we will bid that out. Through Lulu's research, I believe that that's enough money to cover for the library furniture. Um, so, and then with the upgrades for this particular end of the building. I don't think we're looking at anything crazy other than possibly making it more cohesive with what's gonna happen through the the doors. Maybe some wall coverings, carpeting, maybe some paint, and then if Dan was here, he could tell you more specifics, but these walls, these partition walls are all falling apart. So we need to get those addressed as well. I believe one in the back is actually falling off of off the rails, so that's actually a safety concern. The more you open it, the worse it gets. It's gonna, it's gonna fall one day.
For all the programming that.
Yeah.
So is that five hundred thousand enough for this? And it it just seems like.
So the the total would actually be closer to three quarters of a million, because we have the two fifty um, in addition. That's already in the budget for this year, plus the one in the um, the one point seven five.
In technology, do we need to do any upgrade? I like, it seems like now would be the time to do that, and I know in my experience in the planning meetings, you know. I don't know, one out of four meetings didn't work because of technology.
We can have all of that. We would have all that assessed as well. I mean, I'll, I'm more than happy to uh. To take more to work with. We just wanted to be reasonable without really affecting the fund balance to make sure in the case of an emergency, we still could replace. You know, HVAC units. The roof was actually done last year, so uh, we still have the the maintenance to take care of, but I believe that Lorna figured out we're still at a thirty percent. Thirty-two percent uh, fund balance um, in the fund, so I'll let Lorna speak to the. To the, if, no, okay. Um. So if if you want to give us more, by all means.
I just, I'm of the mind if we're gonna do it, not, but let's not tear it apart, put it back together and then tear it apart in three years.
Technology part.
I, so I think.
Feedback to us, though, like if you if you get quotes or anything about this, you will bring it back to us.
Oh, a hundred percent, and the furniture will come back before you anyway, because of the dollar amount. Um, I I will, I would hope that would be an an easy kind of a procedural, operational um. Agenda item, but that'll have to come back to you because of the dollar amount of the project, and that'd be for the furniture. The subcontractors in regards to the carpeting, painting, things like that, when we work with the um, the construction manager. Um, we can probably do those through change orders, but again, we'll be very cognizant and and come in within that budget, and if we needed more, we would come back. For sure.
The technology, I think we look at that too, Lulu.
We can do that.
Any other? Bigger ticket items for that are on the um. That we might anticipate.
Well, there is gonna be some interior exterior um, maintenance on the building, probably some tuck pointing with the with the brick. Um, we do have, I, there's a long-term vision to redo the entrance. Um, it was kind of a phase two of Friendship Park, which. In my mind, I see them as two separate like projects, but that's something that we could also apply some of these funds to and also evaluate that out there. Um, we will be doing an LED conversion. Lulu doesn't even know that yet, but we did meet with the company. Um, but that is gonna be um. Cost neutral to the township and in the future should be saving us some money. We put the contractor through the wringer because I really was. I didn't believe it, uh, but there's a lot of grant money out there through the feds right now to upgrade LEDs where there's no cost to us, and so we're gonna be moving forward with that.
Did, did you ask them how long after they install them? They like someone there blinking?
Thanks, Scott.
Anything?
But and I think just having this kind of feedback too is wonderful, because now I, we can go back to the drawing board in regards to the Wisner Center and really say, okay. This is what we can do with the allotted budget, and if there's consideration for more, we can come back and say we can do more with. Facts, and I would work with Lorna as well, I'm from a financial perspective.
And this is exactly what's been anticipated for the past almost six years, I think, right?
Yeah, two thousand nineteen is when I, through all the records that I have, is when the the project started to be talked about.
Yep, and then COVID kind of put it on hold. And then we had some transition, but yeah. Also, um, and this is exactly what the library fund is for.
Right. And I, and I have to say kudos to the library fund, because during all the transition that was happening at the township, it really was something that they kind of continued to carry the project forward. And then Eric stepped in when he started, and then from there, it's just kind of been all hands on deck and and um. And I know I said he's not here tonight, but Dan's kind of see the project through the completion. And this will be a really quick turnaround time, because the goal is to have the library. Um, they're gonna still be open. Lulu, do you want to talk about what's gonna happen with the library? Just because I think it's unique to what is happening in Cascades, we can still service the residents.
Hello, Ford. I'm Lulu Brown. Um, I'm the library manager. Um, Ashley's my backup. And I've been with KDL since May of two thousand twenty-one, if you don't know me. Um, what we're planning to do is still to offer services during the refresh, because this township. Has library cards and they use them. Um, so we'll be actually on the other side of this wall, just offering some of the basic services. Um, when there's not various board meetings happening, we'll try to offer some of the programs, but that'll be cut by about sixty percent. Our biggest focus was to try to offer the services that residents rely on um, during this three-month time window. And we're really lucky that with Carbon Six and the work that we did with C two A E, they really understood the importance of. Having a tight timeline for a finishing project, but they also showed up with the right information and the ability to actually get it done. Within about three and a half months, which is really impressive. Um, beyond that, I also just wanted to say how much this means for the library, so I pulled some. Early stats, so they might be off by a little bit, but for last year, um, we saw fifty-five percent more patrons through programs. There are twenty-one staff members that just work in this branch. Um, what does that look like? That's thirty-one thousand six hundred fifty-seven people that we serve through five hundred and sixteen programs. That's storytimes, it's teen programs. It's adult programs um, as well. We saw a nine percent increase in overall visitor counts. There were two hundred thousand and two people that came. Through our doors last year. Um, we actually track all of what we call our net promoter scores, so this is how people. Rank how they receive service in the library. We saw an increase of three percent last year, so we're at a ninety-three. That's unheard of. Um, for most like service-based industry standards, KDL overall strikes for an eighty-five. We're always in the top. This branch in particular is always one of the top performing ones. Um, we saw almost half a million physical items checked out. And then for our ebook circulation, that continues to increase. We saw about another two hundred or twenty thousand items compared to the previous year. Um, we also offer free wifi for patrons, so more than forty-six thousand people use that last year. Um, almost ten thousand people came in to use our public computers. Um, and then more than six thousand people, unique users came in to use our free printing service, which we offer fifty free prints every week. Um, as well as our fax machine. Then we have, um, currently, we have over eleven thousand non-expired cards, so that means someone created a card. It exists within our system. Out of that amount, um, ten thousand of them were active in the last twelve months. And out of that eleven thousand, um, five thousand nine hundred eighty-six actually were swiped and used in the library in the last thirty days. So we're really proud of the work that we do in this building. It may be quiet sometimes, especially on an evening or when there's ice outside, but there are times when we're like, what are we doing? Um, but we really enjoy it because we get to serve people, we get to connect with our community, and then we get to share library resources, which is what we're all about.
What are some of the um, changes that people can expect once the refresh is over?
First, better bathrooms. So, um, if you've. Used the restrooms in here compared to the restrooms in the lobby, you'll notice a stark difference. Um, those haven't been touched, they're original to the building, so we're excited to have that happen. Um, in addition, you'll see the children's area migrating to another part of the building. Um, we're creating sort of. What C two A E recommended, which is almost a alcove of a space. Often, you have competing priorities within the library. And that was uh, feedback that we got during feedback sessions with C two A E from various different groups of. When people want to work and they need a quiet space versus kids really learn through play, um, so making sure that everybody has a space within the library. Um, upgrades to the carpet. If you approve it tonight, no more pee chairs. Um, it's a small wish, but. The amount of vomit and pee that is in those chairs is um.
Not the ones you guys are saying that are for the.
Correct, these are vomit and pee free. Um, also, thank you for the cleaning service, which has been fantastic. They've been. Helping to clean everything in the building, at least twice a year that they do a deep clean of all of our um. The fabrics.
Great.
Just one other plug, because I know I've talked to a few about these, a few of you about this, as I've been working with Lulu too on some senior programming, because I think that there's a need for it in this community. So we've been kind of brainstorming on how do we start to, is the library the right place for that? Do they have the capacity? And so. Um, it's been some good conversations, so I think that could be something we could talk about.
I was wondering, when the Ada branch opened, did our numbers fall off uh, more than we expected? And it, I'm I'm sure they fell off some, but did they rebound? Uh, what can you, what can you tell us about that?
So, before Ada existed, of course, we saw a lot of Ada residents that were also using the library. Um, they dropped significantly, so when I first started. I was kind of scared, because every month it was double-digit decreases. Um, last year, we saw still a five percent decrease in physical circ, but that was overcome by. The e-circ, which we saw a significant jump in. So. We've tried really hard to make sure that we're offering things and what patrons want, and we listen and we try to pivot, but. It's, it's never gonna rebound to the level that it has, because people have another option ten minutes away. Um, which is good, I think. It's great to have two very different types of libraries, and hopefully you'll see that reflected in some of the design too. The biggest thing that we tried to do with it was to make sure that it remained sort of cozy, timeless, and kind of fun as well. Um, and that was a lot of the feedback that we got as we started doing the visioning sessions, is that Ada's really great, because they have a ton of private study rooms. Um, but people don't always like the way that it feels there, and they like that it feels like a living room when you walk into this branch. So we tried to maintain the integrity of the space.
I've heard that a lot, that it, that Ada has more of a, I I guess some people told me it's a cold feeling, whereas ours is more of a warm feeling, so. I think, uh, yeah, thank you.
With all that said, and I'm very proud of our library, and Lulu, your staff does a fantastic job. Um, pee chairs. With that, I recommend approval of the award of the construction services contracts. For interior renovation of the Cascade Library Building, and at the same time amend the fiscal year twenty-five budget.
It's a motion by um, trustee Shipley, supported by clerk Slater. And treasurer Corstange to approve awarding the construction services contracts for interior renovation at the Cascade Library Building. And also to amend the fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget as presented. All in favor? Post. Motion carried. Thank you, and thanks for all the uh, work you guys have done to keep the cost down.
Thank you for giving us money to redo.
Well, we're gonna get a lot more, because you guys have handled a lot of it. Thank you. Item zero zero eight twenty twenty-five. Approval of the first reading of an ordinance amendment updating the parks and recreation areas. Essentially, again, the housekeeping ordinance that will kind of streamline the rules and regulations throughout our parks, make it a little more clearer. Manager Smith, turn it over to you.
Okay. Um, when I first started, I guess about a year and a half ago, um, there was some talk about redoing all of the parks ordinances currently right now. In the Parks and Recreation, part of the ordinances, there's four ordinances, one for Rec Park. Burton Park, Tassel Park, and Peace Park. There is no ordinance currently for Wacklip Park, McCraw Park, or Friendship Park. So those really didn't have any guiding ordinances or laws, because the the ordinances that we have, I mean, that that is the law for the for the township. So there was talk about um, updating those to be consistent and to be inclusive of all of our parks, because we had some very. Inconsistent language across all of the ordinances. Some of them dated back to two thousand and two, some dated back to two thousand and ten. So um, working with our legal counsel, they, what they have before you, what I have before you tonight. Is an ordinance to repeal and replace chapter two eighty-two, the Parks and Recreation Areas. Um. Well, it addresses park activities, general conduct, um, it reinforces the dog policy hours, consistent hours. We have very different language amongst the ordinances. Some say till ten o'clock or dusk. Some don't mention ten o'clock, some just mentioned dusk, so it's. It's it's very, um, it could be confusing for the patron, but it's also hard for us to enforce and be consistent when we have inconsistent language. So, um, and then the way that this ordinance is laid out, if we were to ever purchase another. Park, we could just amend this ordinance to add that part, and if you notice at the beginning, we have. Um, the description of each one of the parks with their address and their parcel number, so we, it's really easy for us to add those in the future. Um, as there's more park land dedicated. I will say that through some conversation with um. Trustee Rizzi today, there were a couple of things to point out that um, I talked to Dan about um, between then and now. And I do think we have some inconsistencies in regards to um, like the swimming and fishing. So one says you can, one says you can't. At different parks, it doesn't make any sense. So I haven't had a chance to actually update this ordinance, but we would make that consistent to where, if it's, if it's allowed at one park, it should be allowed at all, all the parks that have water. Especially as we start, I mean, fishing was allowed at Tassel, especially with the improvements that we're looking at at Tassel. And then there, that would continue to stay. There is a pond at Rec Park. It's, I mean, looking at making that more open, attractive, and accessible, you could fish there. It's the same thing with McRae Park. And we just had some inconsistencies, and off the top of my head right now, Scott, I can't remember which one was which, but we would make them all cohesive.
And I just had one question on the definite, in the definition of parks. You say Cascade Burton Park, Cascade Charter Township Park, which is what it's officially called, but everyone calls it the Rec Park. Are we going to call it Cascade Charter Township Rec Park? And also in that list, Friendship Park is not listed, so that should be added.
Friendship Park is at the bottom. Two eight seven zero Jacksmith Avenue. Should be on the bottom of the first page. You've got Burton Park.
Oh, I was just, right, but I was just saying, in, in this second page where it says the parks, it's not listed.
Oh, 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 okay, thank you. Okay. Sorry, I wasn't with you.
So do we want to add that Rec perk to the definition?
So we did not change that because I wasn't able to actually find the official dedication name for that park. If anybody has it, we, I mean, by all means, you can make an official change to the name of the park. This is how it was in the old ordinance, so we kept it consistent. That's why we started to add the addresses and the parcels, too, so that, because at first we were like, what is the park? Because that's, I mean, that's referred to that way in quite a few places.
Any additional comments or questions?
Dog leashes, I noticed he took those from twenty feet to six feet, is there?
Yeah, it can be whatever we want. The six feet is consistent with the state and the county parks regulations. So that's why, to be consistent, we took it down to six. That was something I believe, I believe the Parks Committee or Commission talked about quite some time ago. They had had some previous conversations about this. But we, it could be whatever number we wanted. I'd be happy if people just left their dogs on a leash in general.
Do, does Burton Park and Peace Park currently have signage up saying, uh, dog has to be on a leash? And does it say that it, I mean, I don't know if in those two parks specifically, if it's allowed at twenty feet. I know somewhere in here there was reference to twenty feet. I'm wondering if in those larger parks where people are letting them run without a leash, if they knew they could put them on a long lead like that, would they be more apt to do so?
Am I real answer?
I don't think so.
I think it currently says twenty.
It's a longer lead and they're not doing it.
I'm just wondering if, if, if that's known, though. I mean, it's one thing if it's in the ordinance, it's another if it's on the sign in the parking lot, so that's.
And to be honest with you, if it is on a sign, it doesn't specify the length of leash. It says dogs must be on a leash because you want it to be effective signage. No one's going to sit there and read all of it, so. But it's definitely can be whatever length we want it to be, but the six feet was chosen because it's consistent with.
That's the standard.
The counting.
I like being consistent with the state and the county person.
It's be some serious obedient dogs if they're not on leashes.
They're not, and that's.
Yeah, sometimes my dogs don't know how to behave. I just can't imagine how.
So even though we've made a couple of changes tonight, this is just the first reading and introduction. So we will redline this version, bring it back for the formal adoption at the next meeting.
What about enforcement? Is this like a, I know that we've got some residents that complain or expect everything enforced, but I don't know if you can.
Working with the sheriff's office, you know, one of the things that this does accomplish is consistency. So the sheriff's office knows that the parks in Cascade, this is the rules, and they can go to one location and have everything put here. Talking with Omar, they did have some, you know, like, was that for this park or is that for that park? And then other communities have different rules for their parks. The other part is when we are enforcing this ordinance and these rules, it gives our staff some consistency as well. But enforcement is always going to be an issue because we'll never have eyes on the parks twenty-four seven, especially some of our large parks. It's just, it would be impossible to have a park, I mean, we could.
Unless people want their taxes to skyrocket.
But we'd have to, and Dan's not here, I don't know his feeling, but implement a park ranger program, where you have, you pay park rangers, which are basically the security guards of parks, to get out there and, and, you know, monitor the parks for their usage and make sure they're adhering to this ordinance. But is that the best use of dollars? That, that's, I don't think that's my, I have an opinion, but only that's my call. So, but it, but then when we do enforce what's going on in the park, we can use our zoning administrator. Our, our, yeah, zoning administrator, because he's out doing enforcement, he's out in the field, but then also the sheriff's office. And they do go out and talk to patrons of the parks, and they don't just ticket, they try and educate them on proper usage and hours and things like that.
If it's really a safety concern, people all throughout the township need to call the sheriff's department.
Hundred percent.
Great. Any additional comments, questions, discussion?
I'd make a motion that we approve the first reading of the ordinance amendment to chapter two eighty-two, Parks and Recreation Areas.
Dan must be watching. He said it'd be really hard to put all the ordinance on a sign.
Just the big stuff.
So.
It would be. Your police supports.
That's a motion by trustee Nordeig, supported by trustee Shipley, to approve the first reading of the ordinance amending chapter two hundred eighty-two for zoning ordinance. All in favor? Closed. Motion carried. Next item, zero zero nine, twenty-twenty-five. Consider various appointments to the Planning Commission, the Parks Committee, and the Zoning Board of Appeals. The memo is in the packet, but just to highlight a few, we have some remaining appointments to be made for the twenty-twenty-five terms. To the Planning Commission, I recommend David Maddiel and Robert Krebs. Mr. Krebs is here tonight. Thank you for coming. They would both be excellent members. To the Parks Committee, it would be a reappointment for Bill Otten. That would be his second of a three-year term. And then lastly, to the zoning nor, zoning Board of Appeals, also reappointments. Long-term members Valerie Milliken and Lou Barra. And trustee Nordeig, you're on that zoning board. We'll appeal to appreciate you on there. Any questions, comments? Motion.
Shipley makes a motion to approve the appointments as presented.
Uh, that's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by treasurer Gorsage, to approve the appointments as presented in the packet. All in favor? Closed. Motion carried. Thank you. And last item of business, item zero zero ten, twenty-twenty-five. Creation of and appointments to a zoning ordinance update ad hoc committee. The, the detailed memo is in the packet of the last three pages, but just to hit the highlights. Back in twenty-twenty-two, the township underwent a strategic plan, which was basically, we gathered public input, and then from that public input, prioritized big goals, all sorts of goals, fiscal responsibility, just general, general priorities for Cascade Township. Then within those, but those that have to do with land use, public and private land use, we then updated our master plan, which is a required document to reflect the strategic plan goals. The last step with regard to land use is to make sure that our current zoning ordinance, which is enforceable law, is consistent with the goals and priorities of the master plan. The zoning ordinance we have right now in the books is pretty old, it's been modified, and there are some inconsistencies that no longer support the current master plan. So with that, staff is now undertaking an update where they go through it, work with the Planning Commission, but basically update the zoning ordinance as needed. With system in this process, I think that the creation of a committee, a subcommittee, temporary, on a temporary basis would be helpful. So that would be for the creation of this temporary subcommittee. And then I would make the appointments, being the supervisor myself, treasurer Gorsage, who's the current ex officio member of the Planning Commission, trustee Rizzi, who's a former longtime member of the Planning Commission, and then the current Planning Commission chair, Alan Rowland. But those would be the four subcommittee members that would work with staff. The hopeful and expected turnaround would be in the next two months or so for the draft to be ready, and then there will be plenty of time for it to be reviewed by both the Planning Commission and this board before it's actually passed into law. With that, is there any question? Concerns? Trustee Nordic?
Yeah, I think this is great. I worry about y'all with the time that you have here. Do you have enough time to get it done? I mean, we're almost through January. You've got sixty days to.
Twice a week, if not three times a week.
If you can do it, I think it's wonderful. I just, we need to give you more time so you have it. That would be my, it's like this thing. It ends in May, you have enough time, you know, I just, I put that out there.
It's March here, not May.
The whole committee done in May, like, do you have enough time to?
If you're done.
There's a lot of work to be done here.
If we run out of time, it'll just be a smaller ordinance.
I mean, well, you could take out the, I mean, the timeline is meant more than maybe an optimistic estimate.
So then, I mean, could it be estimated duration? I, I just don't want to put you into a, you know, a box.
Right. And one thing about it, too, I think that.
Yeah, because I did put, you're right, duration of duty instead of hopeful duration.
Yeah, or estimate, whatever.
McKenna has been working on this for quite a while. So that is one positive, too, that I think that in the backend, they've worked on it a lot, and then it's kind of them presenting chunks of it at a time.
Their work is what concerns me. Your work on the committee is what makes me feel good. And I know that Timmy shares the same frustration. He's kind of nodding and winking at me, so, you know, like, that's, you have enough time. But I think, yeah, like, perhaps we modify, we amended, instead of duration of committee, the estimated time of completion so that we all are.
That's a good.
Yeah. Meaning it does stay. Surprise you.
It would be wonderful, and I hope you do, like, the amount of time that you all have to invest is commendable, right? But yeah.
But Chris, it does say that's a timeline for when they meet and they do their bulk of their work. Next line, committee terminates upon adoption of updated zoning ordinance. There is time between that.
Sure.
That is not really necessarily specified.
Yeah, I understood.
I mean, I think that we would probably want to formally dissolve it.
Yeah.
At that, when they're actually done, but I, what I see between the lines here is there's still some time. I think this is just an overview of how they're planning to do their work.
Sure, sure. No, again, I saw the title. I wanted to make sure they had lots of time.
If it takes them longer.
If they need it. I just, I know what they're, 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 the mole, the hill they're climbing, it's.
It's a lot.
Yeah. No, I think it's just, there's a lot of work to be done. I think, you know, that's a fair statement, so.
Can I just make a comment? Real quick, I don't think everybody knows this, but our representative that had been working on most of the planning and zoning stuff from McKenna has actually resigned from her position, and is no longer going to be with McKenna and will be working on our rezoning. So if you all.
Not because of us, though.
If you all remember Chris Corey, who was actually more of the principal lead. I met with him last week and we did a transition meeting, him and I and Andrea met to do a transition, and he will be attending these meetings moving forward.
Chris is good, so I think you have a good record of that.
Excellent.
Make a motion to accept this edit of the timeline to be estimated.
Shipley supports.
Uh, that's a motion by trustee Rizzi, supported by trustee Shipley, to approve both the creation of the zoning ad, ad hoc committee and also the appointments to the committee, with the understanding that the deadline of the duration is not set in stone. All in favor? Closed. Motion carried. Thank you.
And that's what ad hoc means, as needed. From the Latin. You're welcome.
With that, that concludes this course business for the evening. Public comments, now's the time to comment on anything, whether it's on tonight's agenda or not.
Hi, Nick Catzrelis, twenty-nine eighty-five, Brewerick. On Saturday, my wife and I did a walking tour of the bridge and that doctor's house. Let me tell you that, that bridge, we've always walked without the guardrails, and suddenly, it's like, it's really scary, because when you're walking on the other side, the side that's been finished, you feel so safe. So I'm really happy about that. Now that Tuffy is down, and I think they finished that yesterday, maybe. I'm just curious about what the plans are for what we're going to do there. How are you going to get public comments about that? And also that, the doctor's house, my wife and I trespassed, because we wanted to get close to it. It's rotting out everywhere, and so I'm just kind of curious about how are you going to get public comments and suggestions about that? So I'll take your answer later. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Happy New Year. First off, the chairs look nice, so I hope they're comfortable. Yes. All right. As trustee Shipley brought up about Peace Street, I did go out and speak with the gentleman from the Road Commission about Peace. He said that they'd be all right with a variance for that, and I'm asking, obviously, again, for when the path gets redone. Perhaps then also do something for Peace Street, because you already have equipments there. Apparently, I get, I believe Peace and portions have thrown up a river according to the pathway re fixing plan or whatever, should be done next year, twenty-twenty-six, if there's money, obviously, in the budget. So I'd still like that. Also, still asking about the signs, still seeing the snipe signs forgot leaves. And again, if you're zoning enforcement officer, it literally has a phone number on there. Call them, say, hey, come get your legal signs off the posts. If you don't get them off in a certain amount of time, we will go collect all of them and cite you for every single sign. It's not really that big of a deal, and obviously, I don't want our people, you know, buildings and grounds or whoever, to go around and pull these signs off, because you guys didn't put them up there. But tell these businesses, take your signs off, or you're going to, or you're going to get cited. It's not, it's a fairly easy enforcement job, you know, take the, have them take down their, their issues. As like I said before, years ago, it just breeds more signs, and it makes our township look like, you know, it doesn't look good. You know, we're not a roving billboard, so. Yeah, and also regarding Shaggy Pines Dog Park, I saw the playing commission meeting and how that's now, they don't want, I guess you guys don't want people to live there on their businesses. But that was originally a house, you know, over twenty years ago. And I believe that people originally bought it to hopefully have their child live there and then oversee it. I still think that'd be good. I understand that you don't want people living in their businesses, like, say, if, you know, Haley lived at Sugar Mama's, even a strip mall, that'd be a little bit different. But this is a twenty-acre parcel of land that actually had an original house on there, and now they want to put a different barn. And, you know, there are other businesses that have people live there and work the business. Specifically, a dog kennel, the Thornwood Veterinary Clinic specifically as an example. They have a house and their business on the same parcel. I understand, and it's also a very large parcel. So I think if you have these accessory dwelling units, I don't know if I'm supposed to bring this up here, but if, since you guys are doing these ordinance things, maybe it's something to look into. But if somebody wants, has a big enough parcel, make a minimum parcel size, maybe ten or fifteen. So again, they're not living, I believe there was some talk of perhaps the lawyer house that is going over by Tudor time behind Irish, that they maybe wanted to live above there. And obviously, we don't want that, that's too small of a business, but that's what I'm suggesting, some sort of variance for that, if the people that had bought this building and business and I know, I hear it beeping, but it's, you know, the same five people are here all the time.
Uh, just to clarify, variance on Peace Street, what kind of variance?
To not have to bring it up to the two-lane standard of sixty feet wide or however long the road is, that they'd be, you know, since it is an original township street, that, you know, we could still possibly pave it, but not have to bring it up to full statewide compliance or what have you. I mentioned the one-way, he said they don't really like one-ways because not everyone follows the signs of one-ways. Statewide compliance or what have you. I mentioned the one way, he said they don't really like one ways because not everyone follows the signs of one ways. They don't even really follow the stop sign at the end of the street. So while I'm heading up Orange, people run the stop sign and, you know, there's a bit of crash there yet because. A lot of the people that live on Orange see people running this, like, they know to slow down because people don't stop at stop signs all the time, so. But thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, one more question. When they're doing this redo of the library, is it still going to be open? Oh, okay, that's cool. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Manager comments?
Just a couple tonight. Um, one, everybody should be receiving their newsletter in the mail there, February, January, I'm sorry. It's February, March newsletter, should have been delivered today. It went out last week, so if you didn't get that. They may have been delayed because of the holiday, but I wanted to mention that in there, the middle spread is a really large write-up on the Tuffy site and the doctor's office site. With some renderings that were presented at a public meeting back in October. And there's also a lot of write-up on our website underneath the project page where you can continue to get updates on what's happening on both of those sites. So, and there'll be more information and meetings coming out shortly after the consultant gets the final concept created. We did have a structural engineer come out and take a look at the doctor's office before any of this was started because obviously. If it was going to be demolished, it would have come down with Tuffy, but the, the thing to keep in mind about the doctor's office. If we would have taken down the foundation because of the vicinity to the river, we never would have been able to build there again. So they're working that doctor's office foundation and looking at how we could repurpose that into an amenity that will go along with the park. But use yet to be determined, so. But we didn't want to prematurely take it down and then go, oh, wish we still had that there. In regards to road variances, I'll talk to Jerry about that. It's a slippery slope when you have other dirt roads in the township that we know there are some interest in getting paid as well. So just want to make sure that we make sound decisions and don't set precedents. And then the last piece is, we got some questions in regards to ours with the bad weather that had come up the last few days. I just have a philosophy as a manager that we don't close. We service our residents, our first responders need to get here and service our residents, so there are some neighboring communities that chose to close to the weather. And we did not, so just wanted to put that out there.
And we're open to re-marting with our team day right now, right?
We were, yes.
Four comments, trustee Shipley.
As always, thanks for coming out today, Nick, Ken, Scott. And newest member from one of our committees. Chief, thanks for coming out and doing everything you do. Drive safely. And anybody out there watching on Zoom, thanks for tuning in. That's all I got.
I have three things tonight. It's great, right? Alright. My heart absolutely hurts for the people that are affected by the fires in California. And Scott and I have been really fortunate that we've been able to spend some time with Chief Majors and his team over the last few weeks and. I am incredibly thankful for the first responders that this township has. The ship that he is running at these facilities is impressive. If you haven't seen him, I would recommend it and. The attention to detail and planning that they have in place should a tragic event ever hit our township. I, I'm just incredibly thankful for what your team does, so thank you. Mr. Krebs, you tirelessly given your time to the school district and now we get some, so thank you so much for your willingness to serve. Really excited to have you on the Planning Commission. I know you're going to be a wonderful member. And then I had one question for our manager. I've received a few calls from residents, and he knows that this is coming, around Riverdown. Is there any update that you can give us that we can provide to these residents?
So I've been talking with trustee Rizzi, learning about the dam myself. I did reach out to Eagle Creek a few weeks ago in regards to that when it was brought to my attention. They've assisted in the past. We have our last request going into, that we sent into Eagle, so that is something that we're going to be pursuing. I know there's going to be further talk because there's some historical drawdowns that were done. I don't know if the word is more aggressive than what the one is currently that has been approved, so I think there's going to be some further discussion on that. But we are working towards having the drawdown occur, just like we have in the past. That happens in April. I did pull. I think it was in twenty twenty-two when it was sent to Eagle to get the permit. Back then, it was done in February. Thank you for that.
Trustee Rizzi?
Uh, well, I, I guess Chris kind of touched on most of the things I was going to touch on, so. But he's right, we have an excellent fire department that is apparent. We have an amazing facility. If you have the opportunity, should certainly go and visit the new fire station. And I'm very thankful to have, have the people we have in that department. They get hurt, they'll be there to help. And also shared welcoming Mr. Krebs to the Planning Commission. Well, you need some people on the Planning Commission, and if you immerse yourself in the township even half as much as you have in the schools, I think we'll be in good shape. And with regard to drawdown, I sent Jade some documents today on that as well. And the one thing I would say is that. Eagle Creek, one, one of the reasons the township chose to initiate those requests. And to make, and to make sure that the decisions were made by, by the manager is because Eagle Creek was a, a little bit. Hesitant, if you would, or, or maybe they weren't completely on board with the plans, I think, and. In part, that makes sense. I mean, they're running a corporation that gets its profits from generating power. And obviously, if we draw the water down for two weeks a year, it's kind of hard for them to get that, that revenue coming in. So I understand where they would be a little resistive, but something just to keep in the back of your mind as we, as we mull through the process.
You know it?
All good, thank you.
Clerk Slater, no comments. Treasurer Stiles, no comments.
Again, just to answer your question, follow up on manager Smith, the Downtown Development Authority is the committee that's funding this. They're kind of, some of the taxes from local businesses for this Tuffy. Tassel Park update, no final plans, which is kind of why you're not seeing it everywhere. But the newsletter that comes out this week will have more details and including a link to where the full presentation is on our website, so. Thank you for paying attention. With that, any motions?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, I'll support it.
Motion by Clerk Slater, supported by trustee Nordike to adjourn. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you.
I never give my way. Everybody wants to go home, I don't understand.
You can still stay. Good job, but you're not sure you're going to have any of your company. You're your staff, you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Never been more comfortable as a resident is what I. It's not really a permit now, it's, it's basically a notification. Because it's only two. It was four feet for about fifty years.
Yeah.
And then after fifty years. Not like Jerry.
I'm supposed to look smart. Well, he's been doing it.
That's why.
He knows what to say, how to say. I can't say anything. I know what he's, I know a lot of what he says, the way he says it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it was all about plans.
Of course.
The whole thing was about. That's the whole.